...in compliance with Chapter 231, 149, 175. In time of public meetings act adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notices of March 26, 2012. This notice was posted at the entrances of Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun Star Ledger, North Jersey Girl News, and then on the turn mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk advertised in the Nutley Sun on April 5, 2012, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand for the flag, sir.
In flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colored ones?
This is Dan Chefflin here. Ms. Lynn here.
Here.
Dr. Lee.
Here.
Mrs. Russo here.
Here.
Mrs. Valera.
Here.
Mr. Charlie here.
Mr. Zada.
Here.
Mr. Popovich.
Here. Approval of minutes? They had a motion to approve the minutes as distributed on the...
Sorry.
Any discussion? What was the favor?
Aye.
Both minutes are approved as distributed. Correspondents? Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Copter. Good to see everyone again. It's been a very short summer. I'm very excited for the opening of school. A few quick updates. Radcliffe School, the incident that has happened in two East Coast Radcliffe School. Mr. Nicolet and staff in this meeting is about to talk this situation. The repairs are almost entirely complete. There's some side work to do in external and we have to place the chicaners inside the building and the classroom will be ready to open. We're working on replacing materials that were damaged during the accident. We've been in communication with multiple commissioners and continue our discussion as far as safety and planning as we move forward in town. Some staffing comments. Most of the personal agenda is rather lengthy and yet not in perfect state as always at the end of the summer. For some reason, certain things seem to change at the last minute. We have a number of teachers who unfortunately are going to be submitted leave requests. They let us know. We'll be throwing their petitions during our process as always and making them aware if we have to make replacements. Some of our teachers will in fact be out at certain points in September. We've worked with our coordinators to make sure that everything's covered. We certify teachers and we'll be able to run our full process using AppleTrack to make sure that we have a full pool of candidates and we'll go through and make our predictions to work when we're prepared. As well, as you know, we've worked this kind of combined curriculum thought with art teachers over the summer based on both budget and the mobile district wide plan. We'll be rotating our art teachers this year at the K6 level. We have four art teachers in five buildings. Each art teacher will be looking, they're getting together the work on collaboratively, the K6 curriculum. Each will be picking their areas of expertise and enjoyment so that the kids will really in a way pushing more consistency. Every single student will see each of the four art teachers in order to cover their grade level curriculum. In doing so, they're going to get the teachers who are most passionate about and most excited about teaching and exposing the kids to certain pieces of the curriculum. In the past, depending on the building you went to, the program differed based on teacher. What we've been moving towards consistent resources in each building and consistent exposure to curriculum. And the teachers will be rotating the principals and Ms. Valani and the board members with the art teachers, Mr. Ackerman, to make sure that we have a schedule that works for everyone. As well, we've developed a ton of curriculum work this past summer. You're going to see a presentation on the curriculum work. We have members, staff members here. We'll talk about their experience and I will talk a little bit later also about how it fits into what we're doing for this year. Another piece of the curriculum work is we've made, started to make tweaks as we talked about with the academic community, both our technology instruction and our gifted and talented. We're trying to now the same way we're rotating art teachers, make certain that both of our specialists get into every single classroom K6 so that all students have equal consistent access both to technology but also to enrichment. One of the things that we have not been doing is really expanding enrichment for all students. We've been working with Mr. Altamont on a new way of identifying gifted and talented students and providing multiple resources as of now. We don't really have a program. One of the things we're working in the building to ensure is that we have a comprehensive program. If you look at my past districts, we've done this before to ensure that not only is every student being exposed to enrichment and be pushed to regular education, but also that we have a different way of identifying those students who have passions and talents and making sure that they're being exposed to ways to grow in those areas. It's a longer conversation, but it's something that we continue to work on. Orientations this week. We have freshman orientation tomorrow for high school. I talked to Mr. Williams today and he's prepared. They came back from Costco with a ton of water. They are looking forward to an excellent morning kicking off another school year for our incoming freshmen. I know Mr. Courtright is in the room. I'm going to talk there. He's got his grade seven orientation on Thursday? Wednesday. On Wednesday. With his exciting end of recruiting and new crop of students here at John Walker Middle School. As well as with the students, we also have our new teacher orientation starting tomorrow. Three days of activities with new staff members that have been meeting the other administrators, a number of key players in the district as well as coming through some key trainings to make sure that they are set up to succeed. This new teacher orientation is the first in a newly negotiated orientation process for new teachers. Instead of the two days before school year starts and then that was it, we now have three full days before the very first school year and two full days after, at the end of their first school year. Two full days before the beginning of their second school year and one full day at the end. I want to thank the association for working with us because we're all committed to not only the success of our teachers but therefore the success of our students. Again, we're approaching opening. I want to thank Mr. Nicolet, Ms. James and the building and ground staff. The buildings are right where they need to be for opening, which is a much different summer than we've had even in recent past with limited construction. Even including the Radcliffe incident, the buildings are looking terrific. We've got cooperation from our principals and we're excited to open. Opening next week. Teachers and staff return on Tuesday for two full days of professional development. Students return for a full day on Thursday. During the professional development, we're rolling out a number of things that teachers need to know and understand. Mainly resources that the teachers have been asking for and have helped us kind of determine, bring in through our processes of selection. And it should be exciting, two days. We're excited that everybody's back. Final thing I want to talk about is technology. First and foremost, we will be opening our real-time parent portal on Wednesday. Parents at different levels are being notified in different ways via email, via snow mail unfortunately. There will be information on our website. It opens on Wednesday based on when you get your information as a parent. You will be able to log in and see scheduling information and that information will look differently depending on whether your student is an elementary, a middle or a high school student. You'll be able to check and change the demographic information. This is the beginning of us leveraging the parent portal for a number of things. Number one, to increase both communication with parents but also their parental involvement in their students' educational process. Eventually, there will be critical documents that we have accessible through the portal as well as being an access point in this year for critical documents like report cards and privacy reports. Finally, as far as that, our website, we've been working in our beta version all summer. And knock on wood, we're hoping to launch the new website in September and really start small, start simple with our main pages. We'll start building with all the other groups and organizations in district from our PTOs to a number of community-based organizations and trying to pull all the information to one spot so that we have a consistent way of communicating and making sure that if anyone wants to know about the school district, this is the first place that they go for information. So that when we have so many questions swirling around and people commenting on issues that they may or may not have all the information regarding, this is one place that people should be able to know they can go directly to and find not only the information they're looking for but have confidence that that information is accurate.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lessig. Your secretary, your secretary.
Thank you. I just would like to announce that Charlestown Food Service will be making a presentation at our September 10 board meeting. They will be discussing the food service operation as well as the new federal nutrition guidelines that we are required to follow during the current school year. So we welcome everyone to attend to accompany on your windows guidelines of the changes in the...
Thank you. Now have two presentations, one on student performance data and one on corporate work. Mr. Lessig?
As always, we're trying to have an educated conversation that goes throughout the year on how our students are performing. On top of which, we're required to have this presentation once a year based on the student performance data that comes through our state testing. I've combined the presentation to incorporate more than that. Then again, we will look through this presentation, how our students perform on recent state tests, also external anchors and talk about what this information needs for us and what plan to do with this specific year. We're going to begin again, there's so much information that comes from the state tests that to present all of it would be near impossible. What we try to do is through presentations like this to make this available on the website. Start a conversation and give more of the large picture information that we're using to drill down into as we talk about how students are faring in the district. Beginning with our Ask Free. What I've done here again, I know people have gotten used to hopefully seeing it from 100percent.com. This is the performance of the entire state. The Board of Education has already seen this again by asking you. The arrow, the note square, Nutley is falling. And this is our third grade language arts performance. And as you can see the way the chart is built, it's sorted by proficiency. Students who fall into the green and the blue are proficient and advanced proficient respectively. Students who fall into the red are partially proficient or lack of a better term when it comes to state testing. They didn't pass. So as you can see, this chart is sorted from the students from the districts on the left who have the highest amount of students who were partially proficient but did not pass. All the way to the students on the right, the districts on the right that have the lowest number. As you can see, Nutley were about top third. This is third grade. And we're trying to do these presentations to make this information, which is almost always presented numerically, visual and to tell a story throughout the whole presentation so you can get an idea of how students are faring in our grades as they move K to or P to twelve. This is the same chart, re-sorted. And as you can see now, what I've done moving from left to right is those districts with the least to the most amount of students who were advanced proficient. We've had a number of discussions about the value of our state tests and the rigor of our state tests. Again, to point out nationally, the need, one of the things that it does is it compares like state tests from state to state across the country. And what we found is that the New Jersey state tests are fair to mid when it comes to rigor. So in other words, if you compare our state test in level difficulty against other like grade level tests in other states, we're about in the middle, which is why it's become important for us in the district not just to look at how many of our students are proficient because it's an average, it's an average bar, but to look at how many of our students are actually passing high to the things that we use. And as you can see, one of the concerns is that as we move from chart to chart, what you don't want is the arrow that's up on top to move to the left. The farther left there we go, the lower our performance compared to the other schools in other districts in the state. If we look at math, as you can see, we're already moving down toward the middle as we talk about partial proficiency. And if you watch the arrow, there's a nice little jump. It was a anomaly for us and we popped up advanced proficient. Our kids were passing high in third grade on that by most recent standards. So this was excellent. Even though when you look at the total level of proficiency, we were about in the middle, most of our kids who were passing were passing high in third grade. We then jumped to our eighth grade test because it's another benchmark that the state looks at. Our language arts pretty much where we were before, though in other states when you look at total proficiency. But again, as you look at advanced proficient, our students are not passing high. When it comes to math, as you can see, we started to move back toward the middle. If you look at advanced proficiency, we pretty much are the middle unfortunately. Our HESPA, so our 11th grade students, and this is just 11th grade students, not students, not all students who took the HESPA. As you can see, when we get to language arts, we've continued to move to the left of the chart. And with our advanced proficient, we're pretty much in the exact same spot. I will say again, from these pictures, if you have to squint, it's not statistically significant. So the arrow pretty much looks like it's the same spot it is. When we look at math, remember that math, we have that high level advanced proficient. We're there, our HESPA, and we're pretty much in the same spot. And as you can kind of see, as students progress through, what we're seeing is as they get to higher grade levels, we kind of settle right into the middle of the path. We don't stop here though. This is state test and again, I already said the teachers are local. The data is what it is and I don't think it's the best data in the world. It certainly shouldn't be used as a singular piece to assess how a school district, how a teacher, how students are necessarily performing. But it is important that we look at it because it does give us some comparable data. Look at ourselves against other districts in the state. Another piece that we look at, an external benchmark that we've talked about, is our advanced placement performance. What you're seeing here is again, this is 100percent.com. But one of the things we're trying to do is compare how our students do on their tests, the advanced placement assessment, compared to how they're doing in the class. Now, if you notice on the right-hand side, you have grades, A, B, C, D and F. Those colors represent the grades that those students receive. And if you look at the numbers along the X-axis, those are the scores that they got. And so one of the things we need to talk about in the district is as you can see by the number one column all the way to the left, we have over 30, almost 35% of our students receiving A in the advanced placement class as a grade and yet receiving a one, which is the lowest score on the test. More concerning would be the over 50% who received As took the advanced placement assessment and received a two on the assessment. So we've been compiling data this way now to start asking meaningful questions. I don't think that this, it's hard to come to specific answers especially when you work with data. But one of the things we need to talk about is why this trend is... I mean, as you can see, our students in category five, all the students who received a five, over 90% received As. You would probably expect that. The question is as you move to the left of that chart, what reasons lead to that kind of result? One of the things we did was we flipped the chart. So now you got a similar chart, but on the X-axis you have the grades and in each column you have these scores that they received. In other words, if you're now looking at all the students who took advanced placement courses, okay? And those students who received a C, the blue would tell you that those students received a five. The green, which is, there is no blue, we received a green, it's a four. So about 10% of our students who received C received a four. What is concerning though is that over 60% of the students who received Cs received a one on the assessment. Again, there are multiple possible reasons for that. Which what we're doing now is trying to have conversations with our staff to figure exactly why this is so. As you can see, over almost 35% of our students who received Es failed, if you will, the advanced placement test. Failing according to College Board, meaning a score lower than three. What we've been discussing though is that if you look at colleges and universities now, most of them do not accept, as has been in the past commonplace, a three for credit, which really means while the college board may say three is passing, the colleges and institutions that accept our students are saying three is still failing. So if you add three to that, you now basically, even the students that received an A, you have almost 55% of them not passing the assessment. So when you combine this with our HESPA scores, we have a lot of serious questions that we have to ask. We don't stop there. Talked about our SAT performance. This comes directly from PPS and the companies that assemble these scores. Every district has access to these scores. And as you can see, the purple bars represent the performance of Nutley students year by year from '06, '07 to this most recent year for which we have total data which is in '11. And as you can see, we hover just around or just below 500 level. And for perspective again, the SATs are recalibrated on an annual basis to try and maintain 500 as the mean. So once again, if you think about it that way, as the line down the middle, we're pretty much once again falling right down the... This is our critical reading score as you can see from our map. While again, we hover both above and below the line, we're pretty much, we have to squint, it's not statistically significant, right around that 500 line. And if you look at our writing scores, pretty much the same story. If you'd like to think, again, more perspective, the top 10 districts in the state average between 650 and 700 on a given session. And that's for the entire district's worth of students who are taking the SATs. So again, we look at this as another one of the external benchmarks. Final piece we want to look at here is that we also have students who take the ACT either in LuWUP or as well as the SAT. We get this data directly from them as well. We want to make sure we're talking about that. What the ACT does, and they've been mentioned for a very long time, they calibrate their overall scores with a college readiness indicator. In other words, they've been able to look at how students perform in college through the course of four to five years, map that back to the ACT scores that they received and thereby make correlation between their ACT score and how ready they are in specific areas for college. As you can see, the legend, I apologize, is not up there, but the red scores are Nutley's scores. And the yellow scores are the average and the total scores actually for the state of New Jersey. So as you can see, the students on the ACT, in the indicators, there are four areas. College English composition, college algebra, college social science and college biology. Our students are performing far below the average for the state on the ACT. And that fifth grouping is the mean of all four. So again, we've been a lot of data this year. We've talked about, we've been a lot talking with different groups over the summer as to what this data actually means and what it means for our work moving forward. As an example, the ACT does give us more specific information such as, as we give the ACT information on what level math students have gone through, as you see that very first column on the left, algebra, geometry, geometry and calc. How many students have achieved all of the calc tests? We didn't have anyone who took the ACT this past year who had gone to that level. All our students took the SATs only. As you can see for the other indicators though, we have students of other levels who did in fact develop themselves into ACTs. And you can see how they performed. Again, this will be up on the website as soon as we come to it. One of our goals is to make sure that this data is public so we can have internal conversations about how our students are performing year to year. So what does this mean for us? You're going to see an incredible presentation. I haven't seen it yet, but I know it's incredible. I'm going to go through the work from this summer. The original work is the hard work we do as a baseline, the foundation of everything we do instructional. And we spent a lot of time in kind of redesigning what our curriculum should be in the process that we go about making it design. And it will fit into a larger five-year plan to ensure that for now our curriculum is always up to date and always cutting edge. Other pieces, we want to talk about assessment. We've worked last year to start designing, we're defining, reframe it, defining what a common assessment is and what is important. Basically, I like to use the positional analogy that doctors use all sorts of assessment. They take tests, they do screens, they have information upon which to base decisions. We as educators have to do the same thing. There have to be baseline assessments that are in different content areas so we know student to student how we're doing more closely how they're doing. We spent a lot of time last year publicly talking about Performance Matters. We really want to start leveraging Performance Matters, which is a data warehouse analysis tool. It's web-based and it includes all of our student performance assessments, which include not just those common assessments but the external assessments I've just shown you as well as grades and other demographic information such as attendance and discipline. So that we can, teachers can in one spot look at the information and start asking meaningful questions using filters and multiple reports to really come up with what's going on with individual students. A case in point was, we've had students who failed last year's state assessment. But looking at internal assessments, some of those students are doing very well currently, others are still struggling. There's a big difference between the students who failed last year that are now passing versus the ones who are not. Before, we were not able to combine internal and external data. Performance Matters allowed us to do that. So it's a large focus as we move forward on this year, getting meaningful data into the system but also using it. And again, it applies to every content area. We've had coordinators and teachers who are not in the quote-unquote tested content areas starting to use the system. And we're starting to see how even if the data in the system isn't their data yet, they can use that to learn more about the students who are in front of them in a music class, in a health and PD class. And really trying to connect all aspects of the district so that we're leveraging every second instructional time to improve students' performance. Along with this, one of the things we've done is we've tried to define three specific groups of students. Target students, rising students and advanced students. Target students being students who are not currently proficient based both on external indicators and on internal indicators. Rising students, those students who aren't proficient, but that's not good enough for us. What are we doing about them to make sure they are constantly improving? And finally, those advanced students who have proven both externally and internally that they are advanced. At the same time, okay, that's wonderful, but how will we still continue to move them forward? And so we've spent some time over the summer to find these three groups. And with Performance Matters, we can know exactly where every single student in the district is almost instantly. The question that we come this year and moving forward, what will we do with this information to make sure that every single student is in fact improving? The Board of Education has said seeing this, we've been working on this summer. Every year, I have to have five superintendent goals. Last year, they included student performance as well as two of our large initiatives, both our Common Vision and our Common Language. I want to talk about the three quantitative. There'll be a more detailed presentation on all five goals, but these specifically, the Board of Education was very clear that student performance was a key for them, it was the central focus. Based on our strategic planning, which is obviously the core of what we do based on the mission statement. And they've asked me and they're working with me to make sure that all three quantitative last year dealt with internal, I'm sorry, external state assessments. But based on the information that's been coming, they want to make sure that I am focusing and therefore the district is focusing not just on those state assessments, but on those national assessments, including the SATs and advanced placement. So we will be continuing to work together specifically with the academic community that's belonging to myself, certainly the entire board to make sure that we continue to focus on these kinds of goals. Finally, just as an example, we will be working on our strategic plan. I can talk about it during the superintendent's report, but we have formed six different action teams. The specific administrative leadership this year, as you see, if there were goals that were long-term goals, they were visionary goals for five years down. Each one of our action teams will be coming up with goals for this specific year to ensure that unlike most districts, we didn't write a wonderful strategic plan and five years from now we'll come back and say, and if we get there, we'll write another. Our goal is to make sure that every single year we take meaningful steps so that we are ready to achieve at the latest, 2017 by 2017, each of these goals. As an example around competency, for this presentation, we were talking about those skills that are absolutely necessary for students to be successful beyond content. And starting to use Performance Matters in our assessments to measure and teach those skills. Configuration. We've been multiple, in multiple ways studying how the district is configured. Grade level wise, articulation wise, communication wise, to make sure that like you said, that we're leveraging every second of instructional time. And then most importantly, as you're going to hear today, curriculum is a key feature for going to really go after student performance. Again, the goal for five years deals with, addresses whatever call program we do, having a systematic way of examining what we're teaching, how we're teaching it, and most importantly, how students are doing on an annual basis to make sure that we are fine tuning every step of the way. I do not think that the data shown today truly reflects the instruction that's going on in our projects. The question is then, where is the connection between the instruction that's going on in our projects and that information and that data? Because it is critical to us. Case in point, this is the old HESPA. I did want to talk briefly in this presentation about something I've had a lot of conversation about, which is, again, is what is with New Jersey Monthly. They have very specific indicators and they're bad. I think you're going to hear a lot of conversation because of what happened from last, from the 2010 numbers to 2012. Districts jumped up and some districts plummeted. Really, if you ask my opinion, very little changed in one district to a new level, I may try and tell you otherwise. They changed the math. When you change the math, you're going to get different results. At the same time, because of that, looking at the overall number can be misleading. What I will say though is that the individual factors, if you break down their process, are things we should be looking at, but they're important. I'm sorry, the slide is not up there, but a number of them are budget related. It comes to student faculty ratios, average class sizes. It can also be misleading depending on the kind of instruction in a class. Small class size does not necessarily mean better instruction, but they lead to believe that the way they calculate it. Those are also budgetary decisions and that's important moving forward. It's important that we reframe our budget and we put our resources where they're absolutely needed. But sometimes it's not going to be a lesson in class sizes and we're not going to chase the higher ranking on something like New Jersey Monthly, just adding more teachers to specific classes, but that's not what we're doing with this. Other things that we need to look at though, they look at your average SAT score, which we talked about here. They talk about, and again, not your proficiency levels on the HESPA, but they talk about your advanced proficiency levels, which is something again that we want to talk about. They also, the single biggest change, I think, there were number changes to their math. The biggest change was they moved away from their scoring system of graduates to the, they accepted the new state of New Jersey's adjusted cohort graduation rate, which has pluses and minuses. The state of New Jersey is trying to make a more accurate way of counting who graduates and how many takes in the batch. New Jersey Monthly up until now though, has been waiting, the plans of graduates. In other words, if you had students who had planned to go on to a four-year college, they received higher weighting in the math that New Jersey Monthly is doing than those who had plans to go on to two-year colleges versus those who had plans to go someplace else directing the workforce and military etc. They did away with that system and they followed just the adjusted cohort. And what that did was, you had a lot of districts who were very high on the list, who dropped. And it's interesting, if you read the article, the district by Milburn. Milburn had a number one for a number of postings at this point. And they dropped. And at the same time they dropped, their test score went up. So it's difficult to kind of explain to people sometimes the math. The number one thing that happened is that their average class size went up. They got hit with the budgetary issues and they made a decision again, their average class size I believe, I think between 21 and 22, which for a high school is certainly not burdensome. I'd love to have those numbers anyplace that we go. At the same time, that was an increase to them. Again, certain schools had average class sizes of 18, mostly smaller districts. But because of that, they dropped and people are making these huge assumptions about what's going on in instruction that I really don't think we can make. That being said, we were 160, we moved to 140. And again, looking at the whole number, I don't know necessarily what that means, but looking at individual pieces is something that we will continue to do here to make sure that we're taking advantage of every piece of... sure that we're taking advantage of every piece of data available to us to figure out how we can serve students better tomorrow than we want to know. Questions?
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to just talk about our district curriculum project that we went through during the course of the summer. There are three main areas we're going to speak to tonight. First is the three phases of curriculum. Then we're going to talk in detail about the curriculum work that did happen this summer in the areas of math and language arts literacy, and then our future curriculum work. There are three phases of curriculum that we'll look at and document as we go through the process. The first is the primary document. This is our formal curriculum document that the teachers will use to teach from. This is the document that we completed this summer as we worked on this project. The practical document is more of a working document for teachers. That's when we'll take the primary document and break it out and map it out by unit and by grade level, so that the teachers will have a quick and easy guide as to what's expected at each part of the year and during different timeframes. And finally, the public document will be a shorter document created for the public, which will highlight the main components of each of the units at each of the grade levels in each of the curricular areas. Some of the things that we're going to talk about this evening as we talk about our summer work is the district adopted template, the expectations and timelines for this huge task that we completed this summer, the process, implementation moving into the next school year, and how it's going to be monitored. The district template, we started there by creating a template that will be used in all curricular areas moving forward as we write curriculum. It allows for common core standards and core curriculum content standards, depending upon the content, to be built right in. It also provides a location for interdisciplinary connections, technology, and writing in each unit regardless of content. If you take a look at the template, it's laid out systematically, so you start with the subject and then the grade level, and it breaks it down from big picture to smaller picture. So you start with the summary and rationale for the purpose of that unit. Next will come recommendation for pacing, as to how many, mostly by weeks or days, how long it should take a teacher to teach it, knowing that there's flexibility within that. The next section, go back up, is the standards. And in this section, it's structured so that we can either use common core standards or the core curriculum content standards depending upon the content area. As you move down into the document, in that same standard section next, you'll see interdisciplinary connections. This is where we're building in connections from other units. So for example, if you're doing a language arts lesson that we can tie to science, we would then just put in the science standards there so that we can see how the two are related. Again, moving down to the document, there's integration of technology, which I said we will be putting in every lesson, so again, we have that spot there. The next section is instructional focus. This specifically outlines for the teacher what's expected in each unit. The enduring understanding section will talk about the big picture items for that unit, so what the overall goal is basically. Essential questions are those questions that the student should be able to answer by the end of the unit. Again, they're very specific, they are open-ended, it's not a yes or no question, but it is a question that gets to the core of the learning for that unit. In the evidence of learning section, this will list any assessments that the teachers will use during the course of the unit. That could be classroom participation, it could be tests and quizzes, it could be any kind of informal monitoring. This will also be the area where we talk about common assessments given at particular units. In the next section under objectives, we have two sections within here. We highlight what the students will know or learn within each unit, and then what they're going to be able to do. The next section, again, this is in every unit regardless of content, we want to talk about how we're integrating technology and how we're integrating writing. So regardless of whether a unit is a math unit, science, social studies, even once we get into phys ed and the arts, we want to make sure we're integrating technology and writing into each of those units. And then finally, suggestive resources for the teacher. Next, we're going to talk about the process. The process was very different, depending if it was a middle, elementary, middle, or high school level. So I'd ask some teachers to speak this evening to talk about specifically the process at their level. And first, I'd like to introduce Kathy Promannick to talk about the elementary level.
When we started the elementary process, we listed everything that we basically learned in first grade. I had a great coworker to work with. We found very quickly that we were working backwards, that instead of taking each individual goal or objective, we could put it into a much broader picture or unit. And we went in reading genres, and we started with fiction, we moved into traditional literature, nonfiction, biographies, authors study poetry, and interpretation, interpretational text. And we found that we could put each of the goals and objectives inside of each of these genres, and it made more sense. We kind of were working backwards. So instead of doing it the traditional old way, we put it into a new format. And we found that, for example, in September, when we do fiction, most of us do Johnny Appleseed, and within that unit or genre, we were able to integrate short vowels, consonants, periods, question marks. We were able to incorporate or integrate so many different things, not only just reading, writing, spelling, grammar, but also science, social studies, health, and every other area as well. And once we got our brains wrapped around that, and went from the umbrella, so to speak, of the genre, integrating the smaller parts, it was much easier to move forward. So that's basically what we did. If you look at the instructional goals to create integrated language arts literacy units and incorporate skills including reading, writing, listening, speaking, grammar, vocabulary, and spelling, because language arts is not just reading. There's a whole broader spectrum of what we do other and outside of reading itself, but every other area is just as important. Can you go to the next one? The professional development goal is to increase collaboration between and among teachers in all elementary schools in terms of curriculum writing, implementation, and horizontal, horizontal and vertical articulation. I'm not as good a speaker as Jean is, I'm sorry. I'm used to little ones, not adults. And they're much more forgiving when you make a mistake. But the horizontal and vertical articulation, and doing this, I did this with Roseanne Rizzuto, who's absolutely an amazing teacher. We also had a lot of input from Debbie Marchese, who's a kindergarten teacher. So we were able to implement the vertical articulation between kindergarten and first grade, and the horizontal between Roseanne and I, who both teach first grade. But the articulation and conversations were key in allowing us to put this document together. And I also love the idea that this is an open document, so to speak, and that all the other teachers from first grade will be able to add, or discuss, or have conversations on what works for them, what they do, and then we can get ideas from each other as well. So that's the end of the.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce David Johnson and David Minterbini from the middle school.
Okay, we will start with our goals. Dave and I, we're very lucky to be able to work together. We are in the same building, we were both doing the summer programs, so it was very nice to be able to sit with him and come up with curriculums that are very cohesive, they're fluent. Our main, one of our main goals was to incorporate the NJAS core skills into every single unit, almost in every single, every single day, every single unit, aligned to the core curriculum standards, so that the students are not just having a day for NJAS. Every day, they will be given something that would adhere to an NJAS skill, which we are hoping will build their skills and raise their testing performance. We also wanted to make sure that in seventh grade, I would be providing the foundation for many skills, and in eighth grade, when the eighth grade teachers get them, they can continue honing and learning those skills, and then eventually progress to a level of mastering.
With the instructional goals we were just referencing, in light of Mr. Lasvik's presentation on Performance Matters and our student scores over the last year, what Mrs. Minterbini is talking about, going from our skills that we have throughout our entire language arts curriculum, we're basically talking about introduction, practice, refinement, and eventual level of mastery. If we're able to align our skills, our objectives, to continue that improvement in a vertical style curriculum, we'll hopefully be able to reinforce those ideas, so students will be reaching that level of mastery sooner, which hopefully will lead to, you know, increased test scores as they go along throughout their learning process. Our professional development goal goes hand-in-hand with our instructional goals, increasing collaboration within the English department and developing collegiate relationships with the aim of identifying and utilizing best practice instructional methods. Throughout this process that Mrs. Minterbini was speaking about, we were in constant communication with other members of our department, who, even though they weren't part of the actual curriculum writing, they were more than willing, whether it was while they were at the beach, pool, Six Flags with their children, they were more than willing to communicate with us nonstop throughout the process, sit with us and meet with us on their own time, on our own time, to help us have more of a collaboration. We talked about using common assessments and common language all the time. Having one or two people write the curriculum isn't as common as it would be to have the entire department working together. So even though they weren't part of the actual process, they were still willing and able to help out, which is going to bode well for accomplishing our professional development goal in the future. Throughout this process, several factors assisted us, helped us out in writing, arranging our units, developing them, and our learning objectives, and putting them in a proper alignment. Our previous experience using the newly adopted Common Core standards in language arts, we've had at least one full year throughout the entire department of experience before they're actually supposed to be implemented, or maybe that was last year there. So we have at least a year, maybe a year and a half, working with these standards. So this should be more of a seamless transition for the rest of the staff department to take their activities, their lessons, their resources, and align them with the way we have now set up our units. Our units are in mirror alignment. Mrs. Minterbini referenced the vertical curriculum we're trying to incorporate now. Doing so, as she said, will allow our students to take the skills that they're learning at one level and have a natural progression of growth to the next level. So we still have that practice and refinement which is continuous throughout. And as we expand, as we articulate more with the rest of our English department throughout the entire school district, I know we'll be having our meetings this year, our, I'm sorry, our department meetings this year in conjunction with the high school, we hopefully will be able to expand our vertical curriculum up and throughout into the high school. And this way, instead of a two-year plan, we can go all the way up to senior year. Clear learning objectives arranged in a manner intended to facilitate student comprehension within a given school year and from one year to the next. As I was just mentioning, we've arranged the objectives so it's almost as if we're taking the next step, so to speak, where the learning objectives are set here at the seventh grade level, and now that they've not have a level of mastery just yet, but have mastered the skill to a certain point at that age group where they are at that ability level, eighth grade year, we have worded the objectives so that it's now going a little bit further. Now they're going to apply them to a different style of text, a different genre of text, whether it be reading through writing, speaking and listening, incorporating more of those standards throughout. We think that will also help facilitate their natural growth and their achievement levels to a point where they're excelling as they grow older. And as we referenced earlier, the active communication that we had within the middle school, the English department, whether it was learning objectives, the application of the standards that we're now familiar with, instructional resources that we're all going to be using and sharing with one another, and of course, the assessments that we are working on together, it really was a wonderful process, and it bodes well for future collaboration throughout the school year and beyond. And we would like to thank those staff members who aren't here tonight, but they were instrumental in helping us throughout this entire process, as was Ms. Valani. Ridiculous amount of work that you put in, so we'd like to thank you for all your help in responding emails at three o'clock in the morning. Thank you.
At the middle school level, Dana and Dave have a unique opportunity to work together because they are, they should work together on a daily basis, and they are able to bounce ideas off of each other. What they did this summer really needs to be a model for what we need to do with this draft curriculum, especially at the elementary level, because it doesn't lend itself as easily to the vertical articulation as it does over the high school level does. So what we'd like to do as we move through this year is to make sure we're having, not only harness up horizontal articulation meetings within grade levels, but we're having vertical meetings where we're taking the grade below and above any specific level, and really looking at our curriculum through three years, and doing that all the way through. Again, through those transition years from sixth grade into the middle school, and again, from eighth grade into the high school, to make sure we are really covering the gap of what needs to happen in our curriculum K tub. Next, I'd like to introduce Jessica Mabel and Leanne Martin from the middle school. May I have the question?
Thank you. Our process of writing curriculum really started in June, when we started to get the ball rolling. We discussed as a staff what we thought was important on each level. We did four different levels in the high school, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and Precalculus. So we discussed with all of our teachers what we thought was important, and then next we looked at the standards to make sure everything was on the same page. Our next step was we, after we took a look at the standards and what we thought was important, we wanted to take each subject and break it up into units. Algebra I, Algebra II, and Precalculus had a nice flow, while Geometry kind of stood on its own, but we looked at the different units, and we wanted to think about what instructional goals we had for each specific unit. Anything you want to add there?
No.
Okay. So first, things first, we started looking at instructional objectives. We took each unit individually, and we talked about the objectives, and Ms. Martin helped me a lot. I have had the pleasure of teaching three of the levels and prepped for Precalculus this summer, but was not, I have not taught Precal yet, so she helped me a lot with the Precalculus. And again, we talked to many teachers throughout the summer, and they helped us. And we wanted to talk about instructional objectives. And with Algebra I, Algebra II, and Precalculus, a lot of the same things were coming up, so we wanted to make sure that in Algebra I, we talked about what learning objectives for, say, functions were in Algebra I, and then how that is the same and different in Algebra II, and then again in Precalculus. And that was our first step with the instructional objectives. After the objectives were, when we came up with a list of objectives, we started to then talk about our enduring understandings and our essential questions.
Okay. So what we really need to do this year is, we need to talk a lot as a math department, because I know, as you know, if you've read the Program of Studies, you see that there are different groups of students, advanced geometry, geometry accelerated, and we need to document exactly how the instruction is differentiated in these levels. So that's what we need to talk about. And I think as far as the enduring understanding though, what is the big picture that every geometry student needs to take from it? And then what are the differences in how the instruction is going on, interdisciplinary connections that are going on at different levels, and so on? So I think there just needs to be a lot of conversation in our department throughout the year.
And moving forward, we are really excited about showing the documents to the rest of the staff and having them throughout the year discuss things that they think is very important, things they'd like to add, or maybe things that we got carried away with. So we're really excited about the open document and having all of the feedback. And another thing we're excited about was the common assessments, because we started that process last year, and I think a lot of us were confused on how to make a common assessment that would be useful and give us information that we can use. So this summer, I think we really sat down and we thought about the things that we can make common assessments that will help us, that will be telling of our students, and will be able to use moving forward to help us, you know, help us learn how to help them.
That's it? Thank you. From the work that we've done throughout this summer, the next steps, obviously the Board of will have the draft document this evening. Moving forward, it will be a draft for one year. As we go through the year, we plan on getting feedback from the teachers at the end of each unit in some way, shape, or form, whether it's written notes, meetings, emails, so that while the information is still fresh and ahead as they're teaching the units, we have that opportunity to make those changes, instead of trying to wait a year to make those changes. Teachers will be expected to implement the math and language arts curriculum beginning in September. And again, as I said, we'll get regular feedback through And again, as I said, we'll get regular feedback from them through faculty meetings, department meetings, and any other meetings when we're doing our horizontal, vertical articulation meetings in those areas. The curriculum work will be monitored. The administrators will be available to support their staff, whether it's the coordinators or the building principals or myself or Mr. Lazvik, who will be in classrooms, will be there to support them in whatever way is needed, to talk about different things that are coming up in their units as they teach them. Again, every building has curriculum writers in it. We have representatives from every, everyone in the elementary schools, obviously the middle school and the high school. So those staff members are in each of the buildings, and even if they go curriculum and math, it's the Language Arts teacher that has a question, the process was similar, so they should be able to help and support each other. As part, just before we get to this, as part of the expectations of the curriculum, we've talked about everything that they've done to write through the summer. We're writing all of these units, K-12, Math and Language Arts, two huge undertakings, but what we didn't really talk about here is that in each of the grade levels, we've asked for two common assessments. So not only did the teachers who are writing this curriculum this summer sit and really take the time to flesh out what we need to do in our district moving forward, but they also wrote two common assessments that will be implemented in their grade level at specific times in specific units. As part of that, not only did they write the assessment, but they either created or found rubrics to grade those assessments, they created scoring sheets, and they also aligned each of the questions to the content standards so that as we take this information and put it into our data system, we can very specifically outline the question with the standard so that we can assess where our students are and where we need to work moving forward. As we move into this year, Mr. Lazvik just spoke briefly about strategic plan. This is the curriculum goal for the strategic plan. I'm not going to read it to you, but it's, as we're developing and implementing our curriculum, we're looking at the size of curriculum instruction and assessments and really having a plan as to where we want to go over the next five years. As we do each of these different curricular updates, and our plan obviously will be presented to the public, but this is just the first step. As part of that process, we're developing a five-year curriculum plan. Year one will be implementation of the curriculum. So I'd like to, if you look at just what we did this summer in Math and Language Arts, that would be year four. We did a whole year in six to eight very short weeks this summer. Year five is what we're doing right now. We're implementing the draft. During this year, we're also going to be looking at resources at all grade levels and in both content areas. We're going to revise as we go through, and again, we'll have the final approval of the curriculum document hopefully in June or July. Then next year will be year one for the Math and Language Arts curriculum. But as we're going through each of these years, it'll be year four or year five for another area, so that this is a continuously flowing chart. And hopefully, the goal is that once the Language Arts and Math curriculum is in year three, we're reviewing the program again, overall program review, but hopefully at that point, we would have been taking notes, updating our common assessments, changing what we're doing, using our new resources, so that in four or five years from now, it's not such a huge undertaking as it was this year, but really it's just an update of what we've been doing throughout the year. Overall, I just, I really need to thank all the curriculum writers who worked so diligently this summer. It was such a huge undertaking. They spent so much of their own time working on these documents, and our curriculum units in Math and Language Arts, they are really truly superb. We do have work to do moving forward, but we have such a solid document to start with. And as I said, even just with the common assessments is a huge step forward. So for those of you who presented, those of you in the audience, and those of you who are not here this evening, truly thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Vilani, your associates, the work we've done, the presentation tonight, any questions?
Well, Ms. Lazvik, I wanted to note that, you know, we hear from Ms. Vilani all the time, you know, as she does about 110. I can see she worked with some other teachers, you know, we don't see all the time, so I want to thank you because I think that you read about 110s, which she did, and as you can see, education, nothing is strong, our staff is strong. I just wanted to say my personal thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank everyone who participated this summer. I'm sure, you know, the summer went fast as a result of having to do all that, but the district and the parent and really all the board member, I'm very thankful. I have a question, though, about, at what point do we start talking, I wasn't on that chart, about, when do we start talking about, like, new material, like, what the new...
That's, it's actually year five on the chart.
Year five.
And so that'll be this year for Math and Language Arts. As we're doing the draft, we're also looking at materials.
We started to look this summer, but...
Yeah.
And that's right. It wasn't, it's only sleeping, obviously. And at what point, did anything in doing this, did it require us to look at the program of studies again and start doing revisions as well?
Yes. We'll be, yes, we'll be making changes to the program of studies and the curriculum, I think, at the same time.
That's what I thought you were referencing.
Yes, that's what I referenced, because as we sit and look at Algebra I, we're going to have to look at, we want to document the differences between, with instruction between Algebra I and accelerated Algebra I. And we want to document it in the curriculum document and in the program of studies so it's more clear.
Thank you.
Where do we fit in with text, all this new movement moving forward, as far as books are concerned? You know, we, on where we belong, or obviously I know the answer is we need to buy more, but...
Or new. In Language Arts specifically, it's not necessarily that we need to buy different, but we need to add more robust classes than the rest. And remember, the work that we've done with the budget was to make sure that we put money back into categories that we are able to do that. So as we get to, and again, it's hard to, Ms. Vilani and I were talking about it again today, it's almost like year four should be year one in the chart. But it doesn't make sense, the state doesn't allow that because year one's got to be the first year for year implementation. So moving between years four and five, we're going to be exploring that now, so as the teachers are teaching, what we're going to be doing is kind of exploring what's out there. Part of year four, in program review, is looking to see what other districts are doing, and part of that is what they're using to see what we should be using, like we do with Bill Time, like we do with performance matters, what's out there, we have a need, how to address it. So this year, we're looking to do exactly that. Again, math is a little bit different than Language Arts, but Language Arts, you're trying to find texts, and math often is more about the specific resources and a guide. So we're looking to make sure that when we do select from that, it is articulated P-12 so that it is integrated, and we can start sharing materials up and down, because who may be sixth graders needs on the K-3 level, we have an integrated series.
Obviously, they've done a fantastic job and worked so hard. I want to make sure we give them the equipment that they need to...
And one of the things that we've talked about this year was creating model classrooms for Language Arts at the elementary level in each building. Actually, starting small, having one to two in each building, but every grade level K-6 covered, so we can start experimenting, get teachers in and out of those classrooms, and really get it filled with multiple resources, and then make the determination when we decide on what to do.
Good job. Any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Valani. Any reports?
First and foremost, I just want to thank Ms. Vilani and our administrators, as well as teachers that were involved in the curriculum writing process this summer. The deal is to save the open's effort, and what I found so intriguing, I think, for folks that have participated in this process, particularly Superintendent Lazvik, is to hear your vision to actually be articulated and hear words such as common assessment, common language. And I understand that we were working with limited resources. I think we had every small grant from the state to help with this process, so it is quite remarkable in terms of what the folks did accomplish this summer, so I'm extremely appreciative of that. And I do look forward to approving the final draft document this evening. But that being said, the bulk of our meeting this past week was focused on the issue of going through this run-through of the curriculum writing process, but we also did touch upon the notion of teacher evaluation and where we stand as a district. I want the public to understand that this should not be deemed as a punitive measure. Again, it's a push that's been happening on the national stage, as well as happening here in New Jersey, and Ms. Vilani enlightened us in terms of what we could expect as a district. And she reviewed the expectations for teacher evaluations with the ACT committee. Just to quote here, "Non-tenured teachers receive, will receive, four formal evaluations throughout the year. These observations will be shared so that multiple administrators will see non-tenured staff." Including this process, Mr. Lazvik will see all third-year teachers, and Ms. Vilani will see all second-year teachers. And it's also important to mention that tenured staff will also be receiving one formal observation throughout the year. That was something that we did touch upon in our meeting. And last but not least, Superintendent Lazvik did a nice job articulating this earlier in his comments about the opportunity to strengthen our art sequence this coming year by moving and rotating teachers, five teachers, and by adding Ms. Napolitano as part of our gift and talent, talented program to that process. So if anything, I feel that's only going to strengthen the process this year. And I also want that Superintendent Lazvik for including the AP as well as the SAT performance goals for his merit goals that he had stated for the district. And I, again, being that we're armed with this data, I feel that it's so imperative that we move in that direction, and I feel very fortunate to be part of this process. So thanks again.
Yes, sir, thanks. And I too feel the same way. I want to thank my committee, Professor Blair and Brenda Sherman, moving forward. The administration committee met. We've also had a visit somewhere along with everyone else. We're looking at our solar proposal, which you might know about. I've talked to most of my board members. I did meet with the solar representative and our representative. We toured the schools to look at where and how we're going to be able to pick up the most amount of energy from our schools. Obviously, it's going to involve some changes to the outside landscaping of some of our schools, which we'll deal with. We are meeting with the forester this Thursday to walk through with him the process of what might have to be done at some of our schools, particularly the high school, Radcliffe School, and Lincoln School. And we have been in touch with the commissioner, Tucci, on what our plans are, and I think we're going to be in touch with the entire commission staff when we get to that next point.
Yes.
Yeah. We need to keep that communications open. I'm sure we all know that, and we don't want to start off with the commissioners not keeping them completely informed of what our plans are, even though it is going to benefit us and is going to benefit our children financially with the savings that we're going to have from our solar panels. It is all part of the town cooperation. We reviewed quite a bit of the technology, the, we talked about the building underground, we talked about job descriptions, which you'll see tonight on some of your proposals. We also spent some time talking about the job classifications, the job reviews, and we spent some time, as some of the board members had some concerns about the athletic divisions and what their job description really should entail. And I know quite a few of us feel strongly that the athletic department should also be a viable part of the student moving forward, not only what they're doing here in the school district, but going on to college and guiding them in the right direction. So you'll see that as part of your job description, and again, I know we've talked about this with most of our board members, but it was a good, a productive meeting. We also, and you'll see it here tonight, we also finally approved our chain of command, as I recall it, by our entire staff. I know, the floor chart, is it? Work chart. Oh, no, it's, I, I, it's chain of command, okay? Organization chart, and fire department, police department, it's a chain of command, and we have been working on this for ever. Table of organization with Mr. Mustarafo, who I think we should invite to our next meeting and give him a framed copy of this, so he knows what we're finally accomplishing. But again, it was a good, productive meeting, and I want to thank my committee for doing the job well.
The finance committee met on August 21st. We reviewed the various resolutions for tonight, in particular, the transfers between accounts. And we had a discussion on that, and the goal is to reduce the quantity and quality, quantity of the, I think, the dollar amount of those transfers and do a better job with budgeting as we go forward, so we don't have to have new transfers. The auditors will be coming in October 15th to start the review of the previous year. We discussed the cyber-optic joint venture with the town. We got from Commissioner Evans' office some data, information on the cost of implementing fiber throughout the time, including township and the district. It's about $325,000 to do, and it's about a five-year payback, so there's some issues as to respect to the, you know, who has the capital, getting a reason to have the capital and how to pursue that further. Also, we currently have the service provided through LightPath where the contract has expired, and even if we were to do fiber, there's a lead time for that, and it's very important that we negotiate with LightPath the revised contract, hopefully maybe get the cost down further and then weigh the, we have to weigh the two. We reviewed the status of the grant for the Radcliffe lift and the energy grant, and Ms. Yaman's prepared report on that, and we filed with the federal energy grant, we filed all necessary paperwork, and we're also pursuing the Radcliffe grant, which is $40,000 from the county, we start to pursue that. We reviewed the state aid formula with the intent of trying to compare how much aid we receive versus Bellville Bluefield. We want to first understand how the state aid is distributed and then ensure, ensure that we are getting the fair shake on that. And then as we go forward, if the formula itself is the issue, then to work with our representatives and try to modify it so that we can get proportionally more state aid and be more competitive with our surrounding boundaries. We reviewed the, Ms. Yaman's prepared a chart with all of the various professional appointments and contract renewals, when they are renewed, with the intent of coming up with a schedule going forward, distributing the work reasonably, and to have a systematic way of sending out RFPs in appropriate timeframe, and this has been working out throughout the years. We discussed the bond refinancing, the rates have been vacillating significantly, and we thought we were going to be in a position for the free 30% savings to refinance, but then bonds ticked up a little bit around what the representatives are on top with, and as soon as this favorable, we plan to move forward with that. And finally, we discussed financial reporting and what's the appropriate level of reporting for the board to give us meaningful information without going into things every day-to-day. That's a, kind of, working in progress.
Long-term facility planning committee met tonight, August 27th, and we discussed the state of our facilities and the problem that we're having with the overcrowding. We suggested that we look into doing traffic, demographic, and enrollment studies, so during the next month, we're going to put together our queues, put them out, see where we are, what the costs are associated with doing those studies, so that we can better figure out where we are at to project the needs of the district for the future.
Thank you. For all of our schools, Ms. Valani?
Yes.
Scary of the citizens, resolutions on... We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Board regulations allow 20 minutes for these communications. These persha shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that we try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak, the topic, the topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members in the room. Please remember that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant... During the citizens' resolutions only. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Board regulations allow 20 minutes for these communications. These persums shall be limited to three minutes and we ask that you try to stay with Mr. President. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson and no one may address the board members individually. Please remember that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, or participation may be terminated. Please always restate your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Your court, 45th and Place, spokesperson for the North Carolina State Network. I just have one question. It's on page 10, under number 11 approval of service providers. My question is about Dr. Faber. Is he replacing another person, another psychiatrist? Because, okay, because I've never seen a particular psychiatrist use before, so you don't know.
No, he's just, he is on the list as one of the providers to do the evaluations.
And he's not replacing someone else? Because they usually use Dr. Platt, so I'm looking at this, maybe Dr. Platt's going to replace? Nope? Okay. Just wondering.
Just thinking of this quote, like...
Very good choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, 108 East Street. Mr. President, first of all, I'd say thank you to Ms. Valani and the staff. It was a terrific presentation. I know it's so, so much hard work and I'm just trying to figure out, with your promotion to assistant superintendent, does that mean you reduce your number of hours to skip the days of being out on the board? But I'm serious now, Mr. President, I know that the board will be voting on adoption of job descriptions and the first reading of numerous policy changes. None of these documents have been put on the website yet for the public to review. I realize this is the first reading of policies, so I trust that they will be posted so that the next board meeting, any member of the public will try to have a say, they'll be able to have time to review them. But I find it disconcerting that job descriptions were not placed up there, particularly in light of Mr. Kaczynski's, you know, observation that there were significant changes or a significant change in the athletic job description. It's that time of year where everyone's talking about sports and I noticed the connection between that and, you know, adopting policies on sports-related concussions and head injuries. And I think parents might be interested in knowing who is going to be responsible and to see that that is in the job. Again, I trust these will also be placed on the website after tonight's meeting with approval and the parents will be allowed to comment if they sort of...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, please. I just want to say we've always had a concussion policy, one of the first in the states while we're updating the policy.
Anyone else wishing to bear... Not to close this portion of the meeting. Dr. Green, will you move academic resolutions 1 through 3?
Yes, Mr. President. We'll make the motion to move academic resolutions 1 through 3 as read.
12 seconds. Any discussion? Not called roll 6.
Yes.
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 Mr. Kaczynski, will you move administrative resolutions 1 through 3? 1 through 3. Administration.
Mr. President, I move the administration resolutions 1, 2, 3 as so...
7. Discussion. Yes.
See, that's why I was hesitating, because I knew I was going to be...
You made me remember a thought. These policies, and I think it should just be noted that these policy changes will help to address our CUSAC score.
That's, that's a good point.
I think it's good to always say that, almost. So many policies are being revised and next year, I think, we're going to see the results of all your work having...
All of our work. And I think you're right. It's a good point.
And I think also, you mentioned you're incorporating our law.
Yes. The main reason for the policy update was obviously because there were some likely to fill in some necessary changes with our, with our new curriculum and new educational system moving forward. And at the same time, there were some that were just walkway through, because there were no obvious changes that needed to be done. So again, thank you for bringing that up. But CUSAC was the fourth part of correcting some of our shortcomings.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Banchek-Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Dr. Vee?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
Yes.
Mr. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
Yes.
Please congratulate Ms. Valani and her being the assistant superintendent.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. These persums shall be limited to three minutes and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson and no one may address board members in the district. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, or participation may be terminated. Please remember that we state your name and address each and every time you wish to address the board. The first person wishing to speak, please step forward.
Hello. My name is Vali Provos, 312 East St. Mary's Avenue. There was some mention earlier in the meeting about a change in the GT program. There's been some scowl butt and I don't know really what's going on. I thought I'd come here and you guys can explain a little bit more clear about what the changes are. Just as a parent, I have three children in the GT program and I've seen some changes over the years and I was wondering what changes are going to happen this year and what the plan is moving forward.
I'm not sure if you're familiar, Mr. Paul Tom talks about resuming Renzulli base system. And right now, we're using it for certain kids that have been identified as opposed to allowing, I'm sorry, Tom. The Renzulli system is really generated so that it affects the entire district and what we're doing step-by-step is first of all, integrating this in Paul Town into a regular sequence so that she's interacting with all students. And again, it's not changing what else she can do. It includes those activities that have happened along with the small group, our participation in certain activities around the district. We want to maintain those, which we need to find other ways to do some of them. Again, if you look at the district I came from, I think we used the GT program for, it was true enrichment for everyone and we use it as self-identification. We here now identify kids mostly through tests again and what even the national board is finding is that those tests don't find kids. So what we're trying to do is make sure we're identifying all those that get from this in all areas. So Mr. Paul Town and Action Association, who's here as technology, are being working to our regular rotation schedules that all students benefit from the resources that we have. And then for the most part, right now, continuing what we're doing. We talked about, when I first came on, when Ms. Valani came on, with Mr. Paul Town, it was really regenerating the change to that, where it benefits students better and we're giving them more opportunities for enrichment activities. What we do now, for the most part, is individual, it's not consistent, and most of what we hear about, at least what we're dealing with, is directed toward activity outside the district. We really got to really change, we have to change how we're affecting the kid while they're living in this school.
Can I ask about it?
Could you just spell your last name?
Provos, F-R-O-V-O-F-D. Just as the council. Okay, so you have one, two people that are going to be doing this program. It was already sort of spread thin with one person, not someone. There's two people, but on a much larger scale, so I'm, I'm not understanding.
There's one person for a region. Isn't much larger scale. So what we've had to do is we've talked about, and again, we only started the conversation with Mr. Paul Town. My habit is people run away upset about changes. And we have to recognize that the program, the way it was designed, wasn't truly benefiting everyone who was GNT. So we've had to make changes to make sure that we're getting to everyone who, and again, I'm coming from district, but we have four, four Mrs. Napolitanos. Yes, we're twice the size, but at least people that had two. One of the things we're looking to do is find out what changes have to be made and if certain things have to be lost in the short term, how we rebuild those things using the staff and the resources that we have. Again, what we're trying to do is move forward to a much more robust system.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Association, 61 Grand Avenue. I'm here for the Academic Booster Club, our president, and I'd like to thank you all for supporting us on our program. And I thought I would tell you, there were 206 students that enjoyed the program. We had 16 classes. And we were held in a high school where your support tricked us out into Mr. Williams, the staff there, E and B Meister. Mr. Candari made room for us. He had his own program running and the programs were obviously, we had a really good year. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
34, 45, North Place, spokesperson for North Carolina State Network. First of all, we've had some students during the course of the summer have some transitional difficulties. So we, because we had our new staff with Mr. Malonado and Mr. Corbait, who I see right out here, we've had some opportunities to meet with them privately and transition some of these children. And I just want to say thank you to both of them, especially thank you to Mr. Corbait for allowing some students who have lots of time to transition, coming to the building on their own time and, you know, navigate the building. It's, you know, it's so much easier when you have somebody who really understands. So I just want to say thank you to them. Also, during, I think it was June, I had a conversation with Mr. Pello in regards to the New Jersey cap program and the grants that was, the grant money that we had given to. And I understand Mr. Lasvik had signed the paperwork and hopefully it'll be starting this year and it's going to be one and two.
We, sorry, again, we did sign, we wanted to go, Mr. Pello has been working with the organization, make sure we can there. There's an issue with professional development and they have to stop them immediately. But our long-term plan is to partner as we discuss and as the back end is starting to play out. So we are trying to work around that. The issue is that there's some required professional development, you know, coming from a school district, I don't want to talk to the staff. We need to figure out how we're going to work that in before we can truly start.
Okay. And will the grade levels be the same for spring, second grade?
Yes, exactly.
Throughout the entire district?
Consistency.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not to close this section of the meeting, the old business, the old business to discuss.
Yes, Mr. President. First of all, I wanted to, again, congratulate the staff that did such an outstanding job throughout the summer. And this might not be mentioned too often, but I certainly wanted to recognize our, and this is just a little tour that I thought I'd bring in to show some of our board members. I spent quite a bit of time throughout the summer visiting the schools, the maintenance side of the school. And honestly, they look fantastic, better than I, I think they've ever looked since I've been on board, even before us. They look outstanding. They look outstanding. Spring Garden School put a new bathroom alongside the gym. And when I was there, I was looking at some of our maintenance people and it's just hard to believe the work that our people do for, in comparison to plumbers and electricians outside the district. This is a simple copper tubing pipe fitting, okay, that most of us might have in our house. And we have it in our house, you've always, if you ever watch a plumber work, you need to use a soldering iron. Soldering irons are not being used anymore. We in Nutley now use a crimping tool that a lot of plumbers wish they could use on the outside. I was just impressed.